The importance of writing having meaning to the writer as well as to the reader of that writer. And I guess my question to all of you will now be, now, what will you do with those rights that you've shared? Are the children going to be able to enact those rights in your classroom? Are you going to negotiate what's possible? Do you have rules about pens and pencils that maybe you can't use a pen until you get to year three? So have a think, I think, as a kind of staff, what are you going to do with what the children have told you? They've given you great insights and you've really respected what they've told you, but what next? What can you do with those next? So that's the kind of question in the air. I think it was year three who started, correct me if I'm wrong, talked about judging of writing. And I think that's really important for children and interesting that even the very young children felt that there might be a judgement about writing. Those of you maybe in the early years who know the work of Jeanne Willis, so she wrote 'Tabpole's Promise', if you know that wonderful, wonderful story. And when you hear her talk about writing, both as a writer herself and the writer she remembers being as a young child, she talks about it really beautifully, but she said what she wanted in her teacher was a thoughtful editor and not a harsh critic. And I think that just the reframing of that is quite nice. So you've got someone who's thoughtful, thinking about your writing, and they are going to edit it and they are going to make suggestions about what you might do differently or the impact of your words if they were in a different order. But it's not that harshness, it's not that, I need you to reach this unimaginable standard. So just throwing it out there, I really like that, it's always really stayed with me as a comment. So to be a thoughtful editor and not to be a harsh critic. Rob's going to help me with the PowerPoint today, so nice one, Rob. Thank you, Rob. And so we're calling this next session, we're going to call it 'Charting the Writing Journey', and this was an additional chapter that I put in my book on its second edition. I was asked to write about assessment of writing, but I wanted it very much obviously framed within that kind of thoughtful editor kind of approach. And so really this kind of idea of charting the writing journey now, we're thinking about your role. So we've talked a lot about motivating children, children having something to write, but now where do you sit within that process? So next slide please, Rob. I'll be Chris Whitty, you can be Boris. Last week I introduced this idea of talking points, I think are really useful within this session. So if you go to the next slide, Rob, thank you. So just spend, and we won't do feedback on this, so there's two slides of these points. So we won't do feedback other than just have a discussion with each other now. So just have a chat with the people sitting around you, you've got two comments there. We've decided that quality is a higher priority than quantity and have increased the amount of time we spend on writing. And then, so these are all comments that schools and teachers have said that I've worked with over the years that I've collated. So teachers have said this. And then another school set of teachers said, we know that we teach writing well. So just have a comment, chat on your table, just for sort of 20, 30 seconds, does that resonate with you at all? So do you agree with that? Would you agree with that? Do you kind of position yourself there as saying, yeah, that's what we do? I did a piece of research around children as writers at home and at school. And I went and observed a child writing in school in a year four classroom. And it was told to me that it was an hour's lesson of independent writing. And I was there to observe the child, but I'm a teacher, I can't not see the teaching that's going on as well. Across that 60 minutes, I would say the teacher was probably quiet in that 60 minutes for a maximum of five minutes. So every time the children started writing and kind of getting into writing, the teacher would then say something else. So, oh, don't forget to underline the title, or don't forget to include the date. Oh, let's read Rob's because he's done a really good opening. Oh, here's Luke, what do you think about Luke's writing? And the boy I was working with said afterwards, I just can't concentrate with that amount of noise. So he was kind of positioned as a writer who didn't really ever get much done. That's because he didn't, even though 60 minutes is a long time, he didn't actually have a huge amount of time to produce a quality piece of writing in that time. So the time issue, I think, is useful to come back to as a discussion. Okay, next two, just very briefly, teachers are more confident in the teaching of reading than writing. Other teachers have said, over the last few years, we've concentrated more on reading for pleasure than writing for pleasure. So just a couple of seconds on that. Okay, so to the session that we want to look at today, so this links in with the things that you'll have noticed in your booklet. So we want to just think about shared, guided and independent writing. So very much about what we know about the way we can teach writing to lead to kind of successful outcomes. This next one, you can blame Rob and Luke for, and so this is very much about UCPS. I'm not sure about the other two schools, whether you'll take this on board. But this idea of being given permission to experiment, to dabble and to take a risk. And I think Rob will say something a bit more about that later, and that's about you and your practice. And then continuation with the research theme, which is about knowing your sentence types. We talked about how that will impact on writing. So thanks, Rob. So we're going to talk about shared, guided and independent writing now, but with a focus on shared writing, but obviously within context of the guided and independent as well. So this is a tweet that I found or came across my Twitter feed just before the term started from a real teacher, secondary, and this is what they put up on Twitter. Are there any other NQTs out there who have really bad anxiety about modelling? I have no confidence in my ability to model answers. I also have a fear of writing on the board, is it too late to quit? So let's think about this in the context of writing in front of children. What advice would you be, what advice would you give to this teacher? So have a, have sort of a minute or so, what advice would you give to that teacher? Okay, Rob, do you want to choose maybe two contributions from UCPS?
Yes, let's have someone in Harriet's little bubble there, could you feedback? Yeah, you, Harriet.
There, sorry, you're muted now. So I'm an NQT and I was saying, I don't mind modelling at all on the board, but the one thing I get really worried about is spelling. Because sometimes when you're up there and they give you these amazing words, but their words are probably written like twice in your life. And I get really paranoid about spelling it wrong and then them all copying it down. So I'd say that's the only thing, and that doesn't get me nervous, but other than that, what did you do?
You have a strategy.
Yeah, I was saying, what I do is, so with my class, they'd know that sometimes it's really hard to spell words. And if I don't know how to spell it, I do dots underneath it and then we come back to it and can look it up. So they do that as well, but then tell them I copied it. But it's quite a good idea because it means they can also see that it's okay not to spell a word correctly.
Okay, thank you. Amy, do you want to feedback what you're saying because it's quite nice?
Yeah, I was just saying that how, maybe that NQT didn't realise how valuable that thought is. And maybe, I'm assuming she wouldn't have had the bravery to share that exact sentiment with the children that she's teaching. But how important it is to share that and to show, to model that exact thought, the fact that it was difficult and the fact she was feeling a bit anxious about it and the fact that not everything was going to be well. But that's really important because that is real and realistic. And that's a really important thing for them to learn because they will experience the same when they're doing that own writing.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, thank you for those two contributions and thank you for your honesty about spelling. As someone who's been in education for over 30 years and is dyslexic, it's taken me a long time to admit that I have trouble spelling in front of anybody. And so having those strategies up your sleeve is actually really heartening for children to sort of see that it isn't magic and that when you reach a certain age, you magically know how to spell. I still don't know how to spell occasion, even though I've practised it a million times. And that idea of kind of, that you were talking about there, about standing in the shoes of children, the writers in your classes, I think that is the closest you get to feeling how sometimes those children in your classes feel. And I, something I kind of say a lot to teachers is, it's really easy to pretend to be a reader. You just need to walk around with a really thick, heavy book and you can say that you're a reader. But as soon as you put pen to paper, pencil to paper, fingers to keyboard, you're exposing yourself. And that is quite frightening for children. And you know, I've taught many, many children in year six who have a really huge fear about that. And actually it comes out through behaviours because they'd rather be badly behaved and leave the room than actually have to write in front of somebody when all of their weaknesses are exposed. So it's always kind of making sure that you're able to support children. You know, do they have to write in front of other people? Do they have to show their writing to other people if there's a, if there's a real concern about it? So the lots of the advice given, I'm sure you came up with the same to this teacher was have a go, be prepared to be vulnerable and to take risks. And I think that's certainly what Luke and Rob are saying within school here about, you know, feel confident about doing that and kind of, you know, take that, take the opportunity to show children that it isn't magic what teachers are able to do, other than the normal magic that you do, obviously. Okay, so next slide please, Rob. So these are things that I've captured from the teachers that I've worked with. So last week I shared with you what children have said about writing. These are some of the things that teachers have said about writing. So just to give us five, Rob, in total. So last one, that's it, great. Have a talk about these, give you a couple more minutes to have a talk about these. So I know when it's a good piece of writing, but I find it hard to help with ideas for writing. I make links between reading and writing all the time, so I don't really teach them as separate subjects. That was a teacher that I worked with in New Zealand. Obviously the boys don't enjoy writing, but my girls love it. My class have a real issue with writing, their spelling is awful and their handwriting is so hard to read. I was given permission to use that quote in my, in my writing. It's harder to find role models for writing, children see reading happening but not necessarily writing. So which one jumps out at you as a group? You probably won't have time to chat about all of them, so which one jumps out at you? So give you a couple of minutes. Okay, shall we have two more contributions? Maybe somebody wants to grab the mic?
Hello, we were talking about, at the moment, we're, we're making really big links between reading and writing through the guided reading changes we've made. And we're seeing the fruits of our labour there really successfully. So children are really engaged in the writing process because they have lots of knowledge about the ideas which they're sort of magpie and borrowing from the text and also the grammatical elements, but also the sort of creative essence. We're reading Sonia Hartnett's 'Silver Donkey' and it's got loads of figurative language in it and symbolism. And the children are really picking up well on that. We also said that the boys don't enjoy writing, but my girls love it, sort of made us feel a bit awful. It's not really a nice sentence at all. And it's sort of, it said a lot about reading as well, this sort of gendered idea that people, boys aren't into reading or writing. And it's the way it's written there in terms of like, obviously, so it's a bit of a self fulfilling prophecy that there's sort of, that didn't seem like they're feeling like they could do much about it. It's just a fixed thing that's never going to change, which is, in my view, a bit of a shame.
Yeah, agree. And then another contribution?
Yeah, we were talking about the, it's harder to find role models for writing because we've been having the push on like reading for pleasure, so making sure that we're, so always make sure that I'm reading my book when the children are reading theirs. But thinking and reflecting on it, like, do I bring in like pieces of writing that I do from home or to share with them to show me as a writer? Or, and Elaine was saying on a course that she went on last year, she, they stress the importance of sometimes when they're writing, you need to write too, just like a free write. So she'll sit down and write during that lesson so they can see her as a writer as well. So we thought that was quite interesting, something that we don't always do, but we should plan in time for.
Yeah, that's really nice and that's definitely something to come back to, I think. Because who else in the school does writing? So in, I used to teach in Southampton and so what we organised was that our site manager, he would be writing orders and the writing that he did within his daily work, he would do that around playtime. So he was kind, he would sit outside a shared area. So as children walked past, he was writing, you know, as part of his, as part of his role. And then also we, the dinner staff used to have little notebooks, and I'm sure you probably do it with reading as well, but they had little notebooks and then they would write in front of the children or be doodling and just sort of showing children that, the kind of writing that they were doing. So I think finding where you can see role models for writing and where you can do that in school, super important. Yeah, so I really like that, that idea of writing with the children as well, even if you're writing a shopping list. It's about showing where writing features in everyday life. We talk a lot, certainly with parents and caregivers as well, about reading in front of children. But actually, can you write menus together? Can you write the shopping list together? Can you encourage your parents and caregivers to do the same? And then, Rob, the point you were making about the links between reading and writing. I think I would aspire to be that number two teacher. I'm not sure I want to be number three or number four teacher. And as I say, they gave permission for those quotes to be used. I don't really think they realised the impact of what they were saying, it was shared back with them. But I still, I wouldn't want to be a boy in that class. So that idea of what you read goes into your writing. So if all you read is Jacqueline Wilson, what you're going to get in your writing is Jacqueline Wilson. So that's why that kind of exposure to, you know, a wide suite of reading types and genres will improve you as a writer because you've got more, you've got more to draw on. So thank you for that. Okay, Rob, next, next slide. So here's the terrifying model of what writing is, and it's in the booklet for those of you who've got the booklet. And it is a rather terrifying model, I think. But actually, when you unpick it, it is actually what goes on in terms of a picture rather than a lot of prose about all parts of the writing process for young children and developing writers. And I can certainly, when I'm doing any writer, I can recognise that I'm doing all of those things. So it's, it applies to all children and adults at all, at all stages. But I think what it's showing you is that writing is really complex. There's a lot of things that need to happen at different times. There's an interaction between these different processes, different parts of the process, as well as this idea that I need something to write about. It's hard enough as it is and if I haven't got something to write about that I'm interested in, how am I going to kind of develop my own voice in writing and as a writer? So it's worth kind of coming back to that model, I think, even though it looks quite scary at first and you're probably all sort of running for cover, I think, at this point. So if we take that model and then look at it within the context of the next slide, Rob. So thinking about shared writing, so we're talking about teacher leading with the whole class. So very much about understanding how shared writing, taking a risk to write in front of your class can actually make a difference to the writers within your class. So we're not talking about, you know, beautiful penmanship, being, you know, a calligrapher, being able to kind of demonstrate, you know, the sort of, you know, book of prize winning writing that, that, that real writers do. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about what real writers are actually. But I think what we know about the research, what we know about the process, it really is the key to improving writing. The emphasis is very much on oral rehearsal and review through rereading at the point of composition. So that idea that you're writing in front of children and that you're actually showing, making visible what writing is, where you get your ideas from. So that teacher on the previous slide, I know how to kind of mark, I know what good writing is, but I find it kind of hard to help with ideas for writing. This is where you can demonstrate that because if you feel that, children in your class will feel that too. So the focus is very much on the process of writing. This is how writing happens and I'm doing it in front of you. And so what, what children are able to see is that there's a, that it's being modelled to them, how writers, and you are all writers, can think and compose and where ideas come from and how ideas build on each other. So Rob, if you just animate the slide by pressing once. Woohoo, and then once again, look at that. And so I think key to understanding shared writing is this idea that it's made up of three separate components. It's made up of demonstration, shared composition and supported writing. So we tend to kind of bunch shared writing up to mean, it's me in front of you with a pen or a pencil in my hands, actually writing in front of you, but it's more than that. I think it's much more nuanced than that. So the idea of what you're trying to do is almost hand over the baton of writing to the child. And that for me means a four-year-old as much as it means an 11-year-old. So within a session, I might be demonstrating to you how to write a sentence. It's very easy at that point to say, you give me your ideas, children, and I'll write them down. Again, that's still not demonstrating what writers do. So if you're going to write three sentences in front of children, do it as simply as, I'm going to write the first sentence, so you demonstrate. Then you hand over the baton to the children and say, right, so I'm going to write the second sentence now. Who can give me some ideas? Now you're sharing that composition and you're also helping the child who has trouble with transcription because you're just asking for ideas. And if you've got children who are really good at ideas but find it difficult to form them into sentences, this is the ideal help time to help them because you can say, well, give me your ideas. Great, that's loads of sort of words and ideas and useful phrases. I'm going to show you how I can make that into a sentence. And I speak as someone who's dyslexic, that's super helpful to have somebody to take your words, which you, which you know belong in a sentence, you just get the order wrong to actually show that how that's done. So that second sentence can be us doing it together. And then you want to hand it over to the children through supported writing and say, right, on your whiteboards, on your books, in front of you, younger children, think about it and talk about it with your partner. You come up with a third sentence. So you're beginning to hand that baton over. And I think it's really worth coming back to those three, three different, different sections within that. So there's a diagram on the next page, next slide, that kind of just shows that journey of handing the baton over. So at the beginning, it's the teacher writing for the children and it applies if you're 11 or if you're four years old. Then you write with the teacher in that guided writing and we're, we're not spending time talking about that today, but I want to show you where in the context it sits. And then you're handing over to independent writing, the child writing away from an adult. Independent for me doesn't mean child on their own, sitting on a desk, talking to no one. It means without adult support. So it could be a group of children writing together, it could be two children writing together. Not sure, quite sure whether your bubbles allow for that at the moment. So that idea of coming back to the shared writing, thinking about it in terms of demonstration or supported composition, sometimes we call it scribing, and then handing over to supporting, supported writing. So that idea, we're going to, I'm going to demonstrate, I'm showing you how to do something. Then that joint composition, that middle bit, right now we're going to do it together. And then moving over to what Pi Corbett talks about as a mini write. Right, the children are going to focus on a piece of writing and do the next bit. And if you know the work of Pi Corbett, he's just written an article just last week actually, about lots of this on Teachwire, and I can send the link to, actually, the diagram I'm showing you there, Pi's been talking about this since the early 2000s and it gets lost because people say, oh, I know what shared writing is. But coming back to the kind of the nuanced aspects, and I think it's about that demonstration, shared composition and supported writing. If you can think about where you do that, and that process can be really quick. No one's saying you've got to do one sentence and one sentence and one sentence. It's that idea that it's me demonstrating, then us doing it together, you having a go by yourself in front of me or so that I can see it, so that when you move over to guided writing or independent writing, you know what you're doing next. You might be finishing that paragraph, you might be finishing or writing the next verse in a poem. So that idea that that shared writing always then leads on to guided and independent writing. And as I say, Pi writes, Pi writes about that really beautifully. So that's, that's something you can have a look at if you're interested and Rob can share, share the link around. I'm just going to move on because time is short, I can see that. So that leads on to this idea of experimentation, dabbling and taking risks. So I think I'm saying here officially, you're being given permission at UCPS to have a go of doing that and trying to do that. And so I just want to give you an example here. So if you've read the booklet, you'll have seen this, this sentence. She told him that she loved him. So the idea within this exercise is to try to insert the word 'only' into different places in the sentence and to see how it changes the meaning. So you've got 10 seconds to chat to the person next to you. Where would you put 'only' to change the sentence? Okay, Rob, what's your sentence?
She told him that she only loved him.
Oh, so she told him that she loved only him. Yeah, lovely, it's really nice. So she doesn't love anyone else, she just loves him. There are about eight different ways you can do that. So there's eight different ways you can put 'only' in the sentence. And I share that with you for this reason. I did this activity with PGCE students some years ago. And the first time I did it, I rehearsed it. So I knew each one of those eight sentences, I knew where to put the word 'only', and I also could explain what that did to the sentence as a result of putting 'only' in, in that, in that position. So I had it really, really beautifully rehearsed and everybody just sort of sat and stared at me in the room like, yeah, so what kind of thing? The next time I did it, I didn't rehearse it at all, I did it with everybody in the room. And just what that did was completely changed the energy of the room because people were doing it with me. People were suggesting to me where I put it. So that for me is the danger of overrehearsal in shared writing. And we all do it and I put my hands up and say, I am somebody, when I did shared writing to begin with, I did it because I was anxious in that same way that we've already expressed about doing it in front of children, not getting it right, getting a spelling wrong, punctuation being wrong. But try it, do something rehearsed and then do something unrehearsed and just notice for yourself what the difference is. And then if you're really bored at the weekend when we go into lockdown, you could try this activity and see if you can come up with eight different ways of where you put, where you put 'only'. Just want to share a couple of quotes with you to finish off. If you've read 'Girl, Woman, Other' by Bernadine Everisto, she won the Booker Prize with Margaret Atwood last year. She talks about effusion in her writing. So this is obviously a published writer talking here. So as a writer of fictions, I like to mix things up temporally, spatially and stylistically to cross the boundaries, borders of genre, race, culture, gender, history and sexuality. So I think I'm sort of, I really like that quote of what she's saying because I like this idea that she, that the writing she does is a fusion. So thinking about you as a writer, how you confuse some of those things together in front of your children. So you don't always follow, right, we're just, we're doing a piece of writing that only does this here. We're doing a piece of writing that only follows these rules. What about mixing it up? What about coming up with a good story or a good statement or a good opening that doesn't necessarily fit into any, any neat category? And it links to the next slide, so here's another bit from Pi Corbett here. So he really believes passionately in terms of shared writing that teachers who do not do shared writing are not teaching writing. You agree or disagree? I tend to sort of agree with him. And he says it because by doing shared writing, the children are witnessing a writer at work. And for some of you, you might have to put yourself in And for some of you, you might have to put yourself in, in, in that kind of framing of feeling that you are a writer. But for the children in your classes, you are, you are absolutely, absolutely writers. So thinking about how you might make the space, I think, probably in the next half term, unless, Rob, it was next week, but certainly in the next half term, where can you make these spaces for shared writing? Are there opportunities to watch each other so that you could just spend a couple of minutes, you know, in each different class, kind of watching each other do it? You know, how am I doing, you know? And if we're kind of trying to make safe spaces where it's okay to take risks, that's about being confident about doing it in front of each other as well. I know that's the worst thing I could probably have said to you, that to do something in front of another adult, whereas you'd rather do something in front of 500 children. I think we all share that as a, as a teacher trait. Okay, so just final, final slides. For purpose, final two slides. So this is the research theme, so knowing your sentence types and sentence types and know why you need to know them. So if I, before you go to the slide, go back, Rob. Don't spoil the drama. How many, no, you can go one more. If I were to say to you, how many different sentence types are there? I wonder how many you might say. Put your fingers up politely in terms of how many different sentence types you think there are. Can we say there are three? Sometimes we might say there are four. Depends what you mean by a sentence is what people say. So Rob, if you flick to the next one. So most often we say there are three types. There's a simple sentence, a compound sentence, oh, and a complex, there you go. Complex, that should say, statement. Sometimes we say compound, complex, that's the sentence to make four. Other people answer it by saying there are statement sentences and question statements and exclamation sentences and command sentences. Some people who are very into this start talking about compound, complex and declarative and interrogative and imperative and exclamatory because they like using those fancy words. The last one, a double LY sentence, an outside inside sentence, a double adverb sentence, a DD sentence and if, if, if then sentence, an ED sentence, an ing sentence. I got that from a school website. They actually have 19 sentence types that they are sharing with parents and about how those parents can help their children with those 19 different sentence types. My head was exploding at that point. It comes back to what is the purpose of a sentence? A sentence is to, 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 to share meaning, is to, is to tell somebody something. I met Maurice Gleitzman, the children's author, many years ago. He wrote Once and Now and Then. And if you're old enough to remember a TV programme called Round the Twist, he also was involved in that, it's an Australian programme. And I was talking to him about sentence types. He said, I don't know what you're talking about. All I know how to do is to write a good story. And I think that's the, the issue around kind of making a science of some of these things. And then just to finish, so thanks, Rob. So just linked to that is this idea, and Rob mentioned it earlier on, about the reader in the writer. The more reading we do, the more that children are able to kind of identify the patterns in writing. So this is from a real seminal text by Myra Bars a number of years ago. Reading aloud seemed to be a particularly helpful way to foregrounding the tunes and rhythms of a text in a way that subsequently influenced writing. So if I hear it, I can then put it into my writing. It seems unlikely that there can be any fundamental writing development without reading development and vice versa. Progress in one is intimately related to and dependent on progress in the other. So when we are talking about writing, it's always within the context of reading as well. So that's from the piece that they wrote called The Reader in the Writer, published by CLPE, if any of you have had the, the pleasure of going there.